...to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gierbach, Rhodes, McClellan, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, deputy clerk Bloom, city treasurer, business ambassador Bennett, I believe is here, oh yes, she is here, city superintendent engineer Rubel, and police chief Rennick. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, I would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved.
As submitted, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor approving the agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion to excuse the absence of our colleague, councilmember Seal?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Tahar, seconded by Gierbach to excuse the absence of councilman Seal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the presentation portion of the agenda. First up is Congressional Record Statement regarding Celine's 150th, and I believe we have a representative from Senator Peters' office. Thank you. Why don't you come forward, and I'll join you, and I'll give you this microphone.
Cool. Well, thank you. I, uh...
Yes. You might not need it, but...
(laughing). Thank you, Mayor Marl, and the rest of Celine City Council. Really happy to be here. My name, for those of you who haven't met me, or more to the point, for those of you that I have not had the good fortune and privilege of meeting yet. My name's Chris Mattis. I am Senator Gary Peters, Regional Director. Work out of his Detroit office, but I work with the communities in Wayne, Washtenaw, Monroe County. I understand, unfortunately, that Senator Peters missed the great, big celebration on October 15th, helping mark the 150th anniversary, or sesquicentennial, as I have become very fond of referring to it as. Although, after working out, I realized that that word didn't make it into the Congressional Record Statement, which was disappointing to me. It's just referred to as the 150th anniversary. I certainly can save you all from reading the whole Record Statement, but I did want to let you know that definitely wanted to come, hopefully better late than never, and just share with you all a Record Statement which is actually going to get entered into the record a week from today, Monday, November 28th. Try as I might with the election and then the holidays. It's been tough to catch, getting that into session, but it's going to be dated appropriately Monday, November 28th, and really, it's in recognition of the 150th anniversary of the city of Celine, Michigan. And one thing that I would like to read is just the end, and admittedly, I took this from the very good work that the city's done here in researching and presenting the history. But it ends, as hopefully you all would agree, is that Senator Peters writes, "Celine has held true to the words expressed by Riston in 1840," and that's Orange Riston, as I'm sure you all might very well know, the gentleman who plotted out the community, "expressed by Riston in 1840, when he wished Celine would continue to shine in light, knowledge, and liberty with the same increasing brilliance that she has shown from infancy to present time. I am proud to represent Celine in the United States Senate. I wish the community a happy 150th anniversary and much more success in the years ahead." And certainly, do not be shy, please let Senator Peters, myself, know. Call out on us as a city, as just residents in the state of Michigan, if there is anything that Senator Peters can do, because while we are happy to help celebrate the fun things like 150th anniversary, also happy to try to solve problems when necessary. So, Mayor, thank you. Congratulations.
(applause).
Well, let me say on behalf of the community and my colleagues on council, excuse me, we greatly appreciate this recognition. More importantly, we appreciate Senator Peters' service and leadership to our state and to our nation. And this will be one of our treasured items that we will proudly display here at City Hall, because it's not every day that you receive something that was put into the Congressional Record.
Right, and hopefully it's a good one. I will say Senator Peters has a member of his staff in DC who's a native of Celine, so it's not only been proofread, but it's gotten the seal of approval of Connor Kacorian, who is a proud...
Celinean.
Is it Celinean?
Celinean, yeah.
Celinean, there you go. Proud Celinean.
Very good. Well, we thank you very much. Please extend our thanks to Senator Peters, and come back and visit us anytime.
Oh hey, my pleasure. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
(applause).
Up next, Nancy, do you want to come forward? So, in the spirit, or in the vein of speaking of leadership and service, many of you may know that Nancy Crisp, our very dedicated and talented farmer market director, is retiring after 16 years?
Sixteen.
Sixteen years. She is the first and only director, when the market was founded and established 16 years ago. And we are indebted to your service, for your service, excuse me, and so on the occasion of your retirement, we thought it was appropriate to prepare a letter of recognition. And I'm going to read it in its entirety, my friends. Whereas Nancy Crisp was the first Celine Farmers Market Manager and Director, and whereas Nancy Crisp has with enthusiasm and effectiveness made an excellent and constructive contribution to our community, and whereas under Nancy's management, the market expanded to include a winter market at Liberty School and a summer market on Tuesday afternoons at the Celine Library, and whereas Nancy has retired as the Celine Farmer's Market Manager after 16 years of dedicated service. Now therefore, I Brian DeMarl, Mayor of the city of Celine, on behalf of Celine City Council and the citizens of Celine, do hereby thank Nancy Crisp for her dedicated service to the city of Celine and the Celine residents, and wish her sincere best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. And I set my hand and seal of this document on the 21st day of November 2016. Nancy, congratulations, and thank you so much for your service.
(applause).
Um, this job has been one of the most fun jobs I've ever had. I mean, I love developing things, and it was great fun, and I've met so many wonderful people. The vendors themselves, they've kind of changed my life, they've changed my attitude, especially about working people, you know, farmers mainly. And I'm also really happy that I'm retired. Can I do both? (laughing) So, I really appreciate all the help I got from the city and the support the city had for the market, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, yes, please.
(applause).
Let me say in conclusion that clearly, it was a labor of love, and the market today in 2016 would not be what it is without your leadership, your dedication, and your passion. And I have to note too, because I interact with a lot of people who have been involved in numerous farmers markets, one of the best and most compelling compliments I've received on you is how easy you are to work with, how flexible and how accommodating. And that's just a wonderful thing. So, thank you again for your service, very much. Let's give her one more round of applause.
(applause).
And of course, to fill the void, we have a new managing director, and I'm going to let our city manager introduce her. Would you like to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nancy. It's been a great, almost nine years working with you, so Christine has some big shoes to fill, but we're excited for her to take it to the next level. So, without further ado, so Christine Easley, she's recent, about a year or so ago, a little less than a year when you move your family to Celine, and so extensive background in managing farmers markets. And I was looking around trying to find someone after, when Nancy informed me that she was going to be retiring towards the end of the summer season, so in October, I need to get going and find a quality person, get some overlap and that type of thing. So, having done that, this community is very blessed to be able to find Christine, because the first person I've met with, again, Newark, well, had left for schooling and came back, and I talked to that person, and they weren't necessarily interested, but they gave me Christine's name. And so, we sat down and spoke and looked at her resume and talked to folks, and we're just excited, and some of the stuff she's already begun to do towards the end of the summer market and now in the winter market. So, again, and councilmember Tahar will appreciate this, which I already told her, but...
Yes, indeed.
She's a fellow whole college Flying Dutchman, so you can't go wrong with whole college. Unless you're from Kelvin.
(laughing). But you always need to have hope.
So, but Kelvin's a great school, too. Okay, so I just want to welcome Christine. Looking forward to another, hopefully another 16 years or more, and taking this high-quality farmers market to the next level, whatever that is, and see where we go from here. So, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have a couple words, just to maybe let council and the folks know what they can expect from you and the Celine Farmers Market.
Thank you for that introduction. I didn't prepare anything, but I first wanted to say thank you, Nancy, for all of your patience and training me, and showing me all the ropes and connecting, all those connecting connections in the community that I will be reaching out to, and I really hope to meet everybody, meet all the groups in the community, and really, really make the farmers market integrated, and me, myself, integrated more with the community. When we moved here, my husband and I were talking about how are we going to get ourselves integrated in the community a little bit more. We were both born and raised in Wayne, and we lived there, but now we moved to Celine, how are we going to get ourselves integrated in that? And so, when Todd approached me, I said, "This is a perfect idea. You know, this is great. I'll be able to connect with the community in doing the farmers market." So, it worked out really well. And so, I'm really excited to work on this market. I'm excited about this amazing platform that Nancy has given me with the market, some great vendors, some great community support that's already there, and I'm going to try to take some of the things that I've learned at other markets that I've run and bring it in. I look forward to working with the community to bring about that support. So, thank you very much for taking me up.
Excellent. (applause). Okay, thank you for your patience. We move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted?
Thank you, Councilwoman Tahar. Was that a second by you, Mayor Protem Rhodes?
He was.
Thank you, sir. They're properly moved and seconded by Tahar and Rhodes to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify... Oh, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I'm sorry, I missed it. I forgot it was on here. I thought it was the second motion, let's look at it. Can we remove the capital improvement program?
Well, which one is that, Mr. Gierbach?
16-204. There were so many numbers to 1611, I wasn't sure how that was being...
Yep, 16-204 will be the first item then, under new business. So, Ms. Tahar, I assume that you're comfortable then moving the consent agenda as amended?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes, you're comfortable seconding that?
Yes, I am.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor approving the consent agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item 16-201. This is ethics policy. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the ethics policy and to approve or not to approve the code of ethics for the Celine City Council, city of Celine, as submitted.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Discussion. Well, let me just say that, well, I'll begin by thanking Mayor Protem Rhodes and Councilwoman Tahar for their assistance in drafting this policy. As I've said now, I believe in two state-of-the-city addresses. Maintaining the highest level of ethics, honesty, and transparency in government is absolutely fundamental. It's critical, and I think elected officials must hold themselves to the highest standards, and I think that this new policy reflects that. It is a pledge. I'm asking each one of you to commit to following these rules and these standards, and I think in doing so, we will be a stronger, better legislative body. I believe what the standard is going to be moving forward, assuming that this policy passes this evening, is that this is considered and then signed at the first meeting of every calendar year. That's going to be my recommendation, unless there are objections to that. Again, I appreciate everyone's time and attention on this matter, and again, want to thank Mayor Protem Rhodes and Ms. Tahar, who everyone knows is quite the wordsmith and proofreader, for their assistance. Took a long time to get to where we're at, but I'm very satisfied and pleased with the outcome. Any additional discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item C-16-204. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 16th memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve or not to approve the capital improvement program. CIP document is submitted.
So, move... No, I won't move it.
Acknowledge receipt.
To acknowledge receipt.
Okay, it's been... We'll first move to acknowledge receipt by Gierbach. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Discussion or questions, Mr. Gierbach?
Although I know this document is generally just for our guidelines and its ideas of what we would like to see happen, a majority of the items in here are usually things that we will accomplish as part of our capital improvement program. But as a result of recent information regarding the potential $1.2 million for the rec center roof, I somehow feel that we should modify that to be reflected in this document. It's a significant material amount that if this is going to be used at that, we need to somehow reflect that in here, or show some commitment, because as far as I'm concerned, there's a number of rec items that are already listed and indicated in here that will now have to be either postponed or done away with as a result of this requirement, if we move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gierbach. Additional comments? Mr. Rhodes?
One comment that I had was the, as we move forward with the installation of the sidewalk on the north side of Michigan Avenue to connect the west side poles to the bridge, there's not enough money allocated in here, so something will need to be moved around, adjusted to accomplish that.
Yep, very good. Additional comments? Ms. Dillon?
Just to clarify, that it kind of goes back and forth, the Austin, between Austin Road, Austin Drive, those two words are interchanged, and those are two different streets, and it should be clarified as to which road we're referring to. And some places, it says Austin Drive, other places it says Austin Road. Austin Road is the one that's off of Michigan Avenue. Austin Drive is off of Austin Road.
What page are you on?
It's, uh...
Throughout the document?
It's throughout the documents.
You want to take a look at that?
We can, yeah, I just want to just point it out at some point that it should, that they are separate.
It's a good observation, and if there are some mistakes, well, that can be resolved without objection. Additional comments? Okay, the first motion was moved by Gierbach, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. What about a motion to approve and adopt, or not to adopt? The capital improvement CIP document is submitted. Is there a motion?
I would move to have it go back to staff for modifications to reflect the observations made earlier this evening.
Okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes to send the CIP document back to staff for modification?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Any discussion? You got that?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone clear on what the motion is? All right. If there's no discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Moving on to new business, item 16-205, traffic control order number 2369. This will be a motion to approve and adopt, or not to adopt, traffic control order 2369, regulating parking on North and South Harris Streets. Is there a motion to approve and adopt, or not to approve?
I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the document.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. Chief Rennick, do you care to make a comment, and then we'll open it up for questions?
Thank you. Yes, this TCO was put together as a result of the US-12 reconstruction project when they put turn lanes in on Harris. The parking that had been allowed could no longer be allowed, and so the no parking will be allowed 175 feet south and 175 feet north of US-12 on Harris Street, on the west side to the north, and on the east side to the south.
So, for everyone's benefit, because I didn't go out and measure this weekend.
Okay.
175 feet from the intersection.
From the center of the intersection.
From the center of the intersection. So, on-street parking, I guess to a certain extent is an issue, especially on Sundays at Trinity Lutheran Church, but there is a substantial amount of parking that's done on South Harris Street, people who are patronizing various businesses in that vicinity. Give us an idea of where the parking will not be permitted and where it will begin.
It will be roughly about the drive, the first drive just south of where Philippe's Auto Repair is.
Okay.
The current sign that was put there, and actually what prompted this was the signs were put up before the TCO was even written.
Right.
And the sign to the, to the south is actually too far south, so that one will actually be moved to the 175-foot point.
Okay, okay. Mr. Gierbach, do you have questions, sir?
Yeah, because of the number of businesses that are there potentially besides Speedway, and then there's at least two beauty shops, what's the potential of having 2-hour parking or limited parking?
Well, the problem is, is the traffic lane has to start shaping to allow for the turn lane now, and that's as close as we can put it, to 175 from the center.
Which is fine. I'm referring to farther south, I should explain.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
On South Harris, determining where there's additional parking spots that are right on the street. I know there's a lot of Speedway, there's Philippe's, there's a lot of them that would potentially park there all day if they could, because there's other businesses there that don't have that type of need. What is the potential of putting 2-hour parking or limited parking there, just to be able to allow for parking at those businesses?
Well, the potential certainly could happen, but that was not, this is actually an enhancement to what was already there, so this is actually limiting some of the parking. It's not limiting what's further south, where they could park all day.
So, you're saying that this, actually where they're putting the sign doesn't eliminate any parking spaces that are currently there?
Not to the south of the sign, it wouldn't, and not to the north of the sign on the other side of the US-12.
Okay. But again, there's that concern about potentially that type of parking, so I would like to recommend to staff, as I have previously, that we look at identifying spaces there and potentially putting in some limited parking spaces so that there can be turnover. I think that's required of those businesses, similar to what we have uptown.
Okay.
Let's stay on that point for just a minute, because I think that's an excellent suggestion. I would also encourage you, Chief, to evaluate that and come back with the recommendation so that we can have a discussion in regards to Mr. Gierbach's proposal. Is there any objection to having staff evaluate that and come back at a later date, hopefully sometime in December with a recommendation? No, then staff can proceed without objection. Thank you. Mr. Gierbach, any additional thoughts?
Nope.
No? Ms. Dillon, did you have any comments, questions?
No, I was just looking for kind of clarification as to what exactly...
Well, if you can understand that, you let me know. That came from an engineer, Gary.
Right, yeah. So, I guess on the north side, what exactly are we doing now?
On the north side, it's the same as the south side, except it goes onto the west side of the street, so opposite the fire department. You can't park, you can't park...
But there was no parking there originally, was there?
There was parking.
There was parking there?
Right, but this is now going to limit that first 175 feet of it, that you cannot.
Okay.
My observation, and this isn't scientific, but my observation would be that generally that was used for parking during a Sunday worship service.
Right.
A memorial service, some sort of event at Trinity Lutheran.
Okay.
But because of the taper lane, certainly that's not going to be possible, because you'll have stacking problems.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dillon. Any additional questions for staff? No? Chief Rennick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion? On the floor, there is a motion to acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Gierbach, seconded by Dillon. If there's no additional comments, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. What about a motion now to approve and adopt, or not to approve?
I'll move to approve and adopt.
Move to approve and adopt by Mr. Gierbach. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll make Dillon, we'll make Gierbach and Dillon the second, the mover and the second on both these motions. So, it's been properly moved by Gierbach, seconded by Dillon, to approve and adopt traffic control order 2369, noting, of course, this is not part of the motion, but noting that staff will come back regarding the point that Mr. Gierbach made about limiting the amount of time for on-street parking on South Harris Street. If there's no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierbach, seconded by Dillon, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We move on now to new business, item 16-206. This is Huntington Curtis Park Bluffs LLC. This is a series of three motions. The first A will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 15th, 2016 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the CUP agreement for Huntington Curtis Bluffs, Curtis Park Bluffs LLC.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gierbach to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Representing the development tonight is the owner, Mr. Mark Lewis, who is in the back row here, and he's here to answer any questions you might have about the project. I did a brief overview letter and encapsulates the purpose of the CUP Development Agreement. It's similar to agreements we've passed on numerous other projects, most recently Cypress Ridge last year, the old Holton School property. So, it's a document drafted on that order by our attorney, Nick Curcio. It was well reviewed by staff at different levels. It's based upon the approval conditions of the Planning Commission and all of the elements of the CI plan, so all of those are constructed, and also includes some foresight into what will transpire as far as the utilities, easements, transfers, and so forth, those that would be dedicated for public use, including the public access easement from Monroe Street to Curtis Park. So, it's been well reviewed and documented. We also made sure that the elements of the CUP Development Agreement also coincided with the interest and the articles portrayed in the master deed and bylaws that will be adopted as part of the condominium plan, which will also be adopted and recorded with Washtenaw County. The second item is an amendment to the 1958 West Belt Sewer Easement. That sewer was constructed along the Mill Pond Celine River some time ago, and at that time, when that easement crossed that vacant property, there were no improvements on it. So, we saw a need then to revise that easement so that the city wouldn't be fully liable for restoring, replacing any new infrastructure that's placed on there by the developer within the influence of that easement. So, that covers the city and reduces our liability exposure on that issue. Item three, then, the storm sewer easement, is needed by the developer from the city in order to construct the storm sewer outfall across that little isthmus of the Curtis Park, where the driveway goes from the main park to the back park. There's a narrow road and just, you know, maybe 40, 50 feet that the developer has to cross. He has to install a 24-inch storm sewer and an outfall that has already been reviewed by the Planning Commission staff and also the Department of Environmental Quality, and he's been issued a permit for that. So, at this point, we just need to ask council to approve that storm easement, and then the developer can construct his stormwater outfall, so his detention pond, street system have a discharge point at the river.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Before we open it up for questions, we do have the developer in the audience this evening, Mr. Mark Lewis. Mr. Lewis, we appreciate you being here this evening. Do you care to make any comments at this time?
Good evening. No real comments. Gary was quite thorough in his analysis there and representations. Just wanted to give you a quick update on a couple of things. One on the environmental cleanup. I talked to Mike Stoltz the other day, trying to get a status report. Johnson Controls went through some kind of divestiture. They split up their companies, and it sort of threw their timing a little bit off. He promised us he would have this environmental issue cleaned up by mid-January. So, he's going to, certainly can work during the winter. He's not going to interfere with our work in any way, shape, or form. He's not going to interfere with our work in any way, shape, or form, but that's what's happening on that piece of news. Everything else, in terms of the permits, as Gary said, sewer, we just got our sewer permit today, and everything else is ready to go, so we'll be starting probably very shortly in sewer installation. That's the next, the next issue.
Excellent. Mr. Lewis, why don't you hang tight in the event that there are any questions? Questions for staff or for the applicant? Mr. Girbaugh, please.
Just for Mr. Rubel, regarding the sewer easement, is there currently, based on the site plan and the development plan, trees or anything indicated on that easement? Or has that all been kept clear at this point?
I don't believe, well, there probably were a few small overgrowth trees in a small area between the, his property and the river. However, we, it has to be cleared and graded anyway because of that sidewalk easement and the connector to the park. The site plan includes a lot of new landscaping to take that place.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have anything put there that 10 years down the road, if it had to be cut down, we won't have that come back to us and be an issue. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Girbaugh?
Nope.
Additional questions? Well, this was pretty simple, okay? Any subsequent discussion on the first motion, which is just to acknowledge receipt of the November 15, 2016 memo? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. What about a motion to approve or not to approve the CUP agreement for Huntington Curtis Park Bluffs LLC?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh. Any discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to motion B. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the sanitary sewer easement amendment for Huntington Curtis Park Bluffs LLC.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Final motion, motion C, will be a motion to approve or not to approve the stormwater easement for, to Huntington Curtis Park Bluffs LLC.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. McClellan. Any discussion? No discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Appreciate you being here. Gary, why don't you hang tight? We move on now to new business item 16-207. This is SAW grant professional service agreement with Tetra Tech. Actually, both Mr. Rubels can come forward at this time. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 15, 2016 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the Tetra Tech proposal dated October 16, 2016, at a not-to-exceed amount of $819,000 for SAW, for the SAW grant program, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the personnel, personal service agreement.
Move to acknowledge receipt, to approve, and to authorize.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Gary, why don't you begin, and then Mr. Brian Rubel, if you care to make any comments, we would welcome that as well.
Just a few highlights. When the city received notice that we actually qualified for the grant on this third round, an agreement was sent. We only had a few days to send it back. It was administratively approved. However, in the meantime, both our attorney and Mr. Brian Rubel had an opportunity to review it, give us some feedback, and then subsequently, our attorneys took our standard personal services agreement and then modified it so that it coincided with some of the articles, requirements of the SAW grant, and any obligations of the city, and of course, the potential contractor to carry out the grant program, which is Tetra Tech. So, you have the Tetra Tech letter dated on October 11, which thoroughly explains their scope of work, and their scope of work aligns with the agreement that we have for the grant with the DNR. The DNR grant would amount to a little over $1 million. Tetra Tech's portion is the 819. There are some items that are purchased and done in-house by the Department of Public Works. And then the legal agreement follows, drafted by Dickinson Wright, and we request then that the city council would approve that agreement.
Gary, thank you. Mr. Brian Rubel, do you care to make any comments? We appreciate you being here this evening.
Oh, you're quite welcome, and thank you for having me. I did, and I'm not sure your preference here, I did prepare, it's probably been several years since we applied for this grant. We do have some new council people. I did prepare a brief summary on PowerPoint of the SAW program. Is that your desire to me, to go through that quickly, or do it verbally?
Why don't you do it verbally unless there's objections? There's probably some council members, there certainly are some council members who were not part of those initial discussions, but I think for the audience's benefit, there may be some value in you maybe giving a brief overview.
It'd be my pleasure. The SAW is an acronym, S-A-W. It stands for S being stormwater, A being asset management, and W being wastewater. That's the real core of the grant program. It's to prepare asset management plans for either your stormwater system, your wastewater system, or both. And in 2013 is when the applications were taken by the Department of Environmental Quality, and 660 communities around Michigan applied. That was more than they could possibly give out in any one year. It overwhelmed staff, so they made a decision to give out about $100 million per year, and they ranked communities solely on a lottery. It was not on a qualification-based system. So, every year, they give out about $100 million, and it took three years for Celine's ping-pong ball in the lottery to come up. And so, yours came up last month. You were eligible for the million dollars that you requested, and Celine did request a plan for both stormwater and wastewater. So, over the next three years, you will be developing a plan, an asset management plan for both of those systems. And asset management plan is a technical word, but really, it's kind of like an owner's manual of those systems. You have a car that has a checklist of how you maintain the system, and that's what this would be, developing a, an owner's manual for the wastewater system, the sewers and the plant, and the storm sewer system. And I think it's kind of exciting because it enables me, you, to develop some things that I have talked to staff about for years. I've been in front of the council before, and they've, you've asked me, well, what's next at our wastewater plant? And the truth was, there was never a long-term plan. Things were repaired as, as they broke. This will allow you to prepare a long-term plan, so we'll know five, 10 years ahead of time what kind of investment we need to make in that facility. So, I think it's terribly exciting. Mr. Fordice has wanted to have computer models of the sewer system and the storm sewer system to aid in answering questions about bottlenecks and growth, and this will enable those to be developed, which I think is exciting. Mr. Skoll and I talked at least three years ago about a update to, for the ordinance that controls the limits that industry can make to your sanitary sewer system. It had been, it's been 12 or 13 years since that was last calculated. This grant will pay for that study. So, it really is quite exciting what it can do. There's eight or nine different steps to it. I won't bore you by going through that list, but it's all in the proposal. But we'll start, just to go through a couple of things, we'll start with inventorying the system, so updating the maps. We'll assess the condition of the system, so we'll inspect and televise and walk around, take photographs of the system. Other things that we'll do is it'll allow you to purchase software, so you can maintain the assets and keep records of all the O&amp;M that you do, so Mr. Fordice's staff will be able to enter all that into computers. It will pay for computers. It will pay for tablets for his staff to have in the vehicles, and they can enter the data actually as they do the function in the field. But it'll repair the plan, but, you know, again, as I indicated, the real output from the plan is your capital projects over 20 years, and you'll know year by year, it can be adjusted, but what you will need to invest. This plan is a permit requirement for your wastewater plant and your sewer system, so you will need to do it anyway. This grant is a way to pay for that requirement. The storm sewer system, it's not a requirement to do it, but Mr. Fordice believes it will be of value to him. And the nice thing about is the match that's required can be staff time, so Mr. Fordice is, you won't have to pay cash for that. Mr. Fordice will be able to do that with labor of his staff, and we've been talking about specifically how to do that. The only disadvantage to, to the grant is it does require a commitment to fund the improvements that are needed. So, that, that will have to work through, but clearly, we will manage the program based on the ability to pay for it. We won't commit to a program that nobody can pay for, so that's all part of the process to do that well. It'll take about three years to go through it. Roughly, next year, we'll be inventorying and collecting data. 2018, we'll be putting it all together with the science and these models, and then in 2019, we'll work on the plan. And that'll be a collaborative process with staff and the consultant. And I think that's the highlights. It's, like I say before, it's quite exciting to be able to do many things that we've, we've wanted to, but have deferred.
Indeed. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there questions for our guests from Tetra Tech or for city staff? Mr. Girbaugh and then Councilwoman McClellan.
Just real quick, in reading through the document, or Mr. Rubel's letter, it indicated that there were some items that we had to modify to meet the conditions of the grant. Was there anything material or anything different that we wouldn't have expected to be changed?
I think it was more just modification with staff about some expectation, the scope of work, very small things, like this industrial limits. We just found a way to be able to move hours around to also do that, so nothing significant.
Thank you. Ms. McClellan, please.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit, does this affect at all some of the other things with the studies that's going on with the Waves Water Treatment Plant and the odor abatement issues, that kind of thing? Is this going to affect that at all, or does it have the potential to do any, anything with that?
Well, they, they're interrelated. The odor control study, as it's going on, may identify some capital needs, and those capital needs should be brought into the plan as part of your holistic plan. So, I would say it is interrelated, but I don't believe this would affect the outcome of the odor control study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a question at this end of the desk? No? Okay. Any additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh, please.
Yeah, just curious, so, this is really doing the plan and everything, but there's no way to bring any of our costs associated with the odor abatement into this, since it's a study?
Yeah, this program definitely will not pay for capital cost. It's only a planning grant, as it was applied for, so I, it will not be able to pay for any capital cost. You may be able to make an argument that some of the study costs could be reimbursable.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was hoping, that we may be able to do that, or as part of our cost sharing or whatever we have to...
Yeah, clearly, we've, I've had a great success in bringing these in under budget, so I can't promise that. We'll have to see how it goes, but clearly, if, if we can do this scope under budget, then that would be an opportunity to bring some of those costs in.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Any additional comments or questions, excuse me? No? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Any subsequent discussion on the motion that's been moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahar? Mayor Portem Rhodes?
There is a, one of the words towards the end of that motion needs to be changed. It's stated "personal," it really should be "professional."
Yes, I was just thinking that.
That was the only comment I had.
Yep. That change will be made without objection. Everyone clear on that?
Yep.
Okay. Any additional discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 16-208. This is Faradine Condominiums Development Agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 16, 2016 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the Faradine Condominiums Development Agreement as submitted.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
All right, thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any comment? I believe we have the applicant, the petitioner, Mr. Damian Farrell. Damian, thank you for being here. You might want to come forward as well in the event that there are questions for you, and we'll allow you the opportunity to make a comment as well. Mr. Rubel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, Mr. Damian Farrell is in the process of closing on the property on 207 Monroe Street, just north of Peoples Park area and across from the cemetery. The development did obtain zoning approval, both through the Planning Commission and city council, subsequently received both final, or preliminary and final site plan approval, and so all the elements and requirements of those actions are wrapped into the development agreement, very similar to the way we just handled Kirsch Park Bluffs. Agreement was drafted by our city attorney after reviewing the, the requirements of the Planning Commission, the site plan, staff reviews, so forth. There was a late communication today between the owner's engineer and Jeff Fordice, and the fact that there, there is one small change or correction to be made here in Article 4.2 on page 3. In the utilities section of Article 4, number 2, where it talks about easement and infrastructure ownership, the status of the ownership of sanitary sewer was sort of in debate, just as it was in the Curtis Park Bluffs Agreement. And in the end, after discussions with the DEQ and back and forth with the DPW Director Fordice, myself, and also City Manager Campbell, it was determined that both the Curtis Park Bluffs project, as well as the Faradine project, was established in such a way that the, because the units are individually owned, they have individual services and meters, that those are, qualify them to be a public sewer, not a private sewer. Now, the Curtis Park Bluffs Agreement, Development Agreement was changed before it came to you. Somehow, this one, in the, one of the revisions did not take. That part wasn't updated. So, actually, in Article 4, Part 2, it should say, we need to revise just that one sentence where it talks about the sanitary sewer shall remain under condominium ownership. We will just change that one sentence to show that when it's completed, the sanitary sewer, just like the water main, after it's inspected, accepted, and by the, by the city council, it comes to city council before it's accepted for your approval. Then it would become public, as what the final intent is. So, that would be the only change.
Everyone clear on that change? No? Restate what page and section for Ms. Tahar.
Okay, if you go to page 3...
I'm on, I'm on the page, I see the paragraph, but I wasn't clear what it was it should say.
It should say that it would not be, it would be a public sewer, not a private sewer.
From the beginning.
It seems like it already says.
It does say in the second to last sentence in that paragraph, until such time as the, that the DEQ, MDQ determines that it should become a public utility.
We actually got past that step with the DEQ and staff, and so that sentence can be just changed to that it would be just a public sewer after accepted by the city. So, we don't need the step where we have to wait for the DEQ to make a decision. We've already had that discussion.
Okay. Clear now, Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional comments, Mr. Rubel?
No, the, like I say, the memo was briefed, just talks about the history of the project, and so the elements are similar to Kirsch Park Bluffs Grant. Both have, are going to have private streets, private storm sewer systems. The only public systems would be the water main and sanitary sewer.
Okay. Thank you for that analysis. Mr. Farrell, we welcome you here this evening. We would love, if you're so inclined, for you to, to give us an update and make it. Any additional comments that you deem appropriate?
No, I was really glad to get this issue resolved this morning, clarify that, so I appreciate, thanks, Gary, for working on that, and to Jeff as well, for getting on with that. I have put an email out there proposing a closing date on the property in early February, and so, just waiting for a response from that. We are wrapping up the condo documents. My attorney unfortunately lost her father, so she took a three-week break to go and wrap up his estate. And so, we lost a little time on that, but she's in the process of catching up on all of that. So, we're on, we're moving forward.
Things are proceeding nicely, it sounds like.
Yep. Bids are coming in this week for lots of pieces of the project, so, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Questions for the applicant or for city staff? Mr. Girba?
This is for, maybe for our attorney, Mr. Smith. As we have not yet closed on this property, why would we be accepting the condominium agreement at this point in time? All the other ones that we do, normally, the property's owned by the individual. At this point, we still own it and it hasn't been closed. I don't want to set a precedent, or can this document be rescinded if something should not close?
Well, just, you can, real simply sign that it's closed on the city side.
Okay, so we would say it's only acceptable after closing? So, we've changed that.
Because the developer can't really own the property until he owns it, so...
We had a similar concern with the Houghton property, where the streets were going to be dedicated prior to the completion of it. So, I want to make sure that we are consistent with how we handle this, especially that they don't own the property, we do.
Can I stand that issue for just a moment? Mr. Smith, do you think that if Mr. Girba's sentiment is shared by majority on council, would you recommend modifying the motion as presented on the agenda, or is that not necessary?
I don't think that's necessary. We'll just hold it and not have anybody sign up.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Girba, anything further, sir? No? Any additional questions? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. Then if there's no discussion, we just have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 16. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. What about a motion now to approve or not to approve the Faradine condominiums development agreement as submitted?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Discussion? No discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Girba.
We shouldn't say submitted as amended, or as Mr. Rubel...
Yeah, we could probably do that. Yep. You're still comfortable moving that motion, Mr. Har?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Again, noting that small modification that Mr. Rubel articulated earlier. So, it's been properly moved to approve the agreement as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 16-209. This is 2017 Community Event Waiver of Fees. This is an issue, of course, that we discussed at length at our last council work meeting, the one that preceded tonight's. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 15, 2016 memo from City Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the 2017 Community Event Waiver of Fees as submitted.
I'll make the motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve with a dollar amount, I think, in the motion, the amount of $23,000, I believe it is.
Let me pull up the memo. All right, so let's, see that document there. So, the motion would read, Mr. Girba, unless you tell me different, would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 15, 2016 memo from City Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the 2017 Community Event Waiver of Fees as submitted in the amount of $23,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Rhodes. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion or questions for staff? Again, we discussed this at length at a council work meeting, one meeting back, but our chair would be happy to entertain any questions, comments that members have. No? Well, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Rhodes, to approve as submitted, acknowledging the dollar amount, which is $23,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item 16-210. Reporting of CVTRS information to the Department of Treasury. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 16, 2016 memo from Deputy Treasurer Joanne McDonough, and to approve or not to approve the accountability and transparency documents for the 2017 CVTRS, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to sign the document on behalf of the city of Saline.
Move to acknowledge, to approve, and to authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. You're on a roll tonight.
I know.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. I don't believe our deputy treasurer is here, but our city treasurer is here. Do you care to make any comment, or? No? Okay, well, we'll open it up for questions, and maybe there's some questions for you. Any questions from the group? That one was pretty straightforward, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have. Mr. Girba?
I was just going to say, I think for the public, this is just the information that we provide that communicates kind of the transparency and everything that has been the approach of the current governor, but also the expectation that we provide information that shows our financial stability and our financial information that's available to the public.
And this, this document is put out on the kiosk, and it is also available online? In fact, it's required to be available online, is it not?
Yes, once it's approved by the city council and submitted to the state, it'll go on our website.
Okay, very good. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Har, please.
Yeah, just a comment in looking over the information. I hope people will actually go and look at this, because it's very clear and very informative, very well laid out. I think it's really useful information, and people should take a look at it.
Indeed. Thank you, ma'am. Any additional comments or questions? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 16-211. This is 2017 City Council Meeting Dates. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 16, 2016 memo from City Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the 2017 City Council Dates as submitted.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Tahar to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Mr. Har, I'll turn it over to you. I'm assuming you have a question or comment.
Well, yes, I do. I have one question. I noticed one of the dates in October, October 2 falls during the proposed sister city trip to Lindenberg, which would potentially mean that council member CO and I and the mayor would not be here. That could be a problem.
Yep.
Or not.
I didn't even think about that. That was a, I'm glad that you caught that. Get my calendar out here. So, that's the ninth, the second, you said? I'm sorry?
The second, yes.
And tell me again, the, I know it's tentative, but what's the beginning date of that trip and the end date?
September 26 through, I don't know, sorry. Does somebody have a calendar? I turned my phone off, so... So, it's September 26 through October 6 or 7.
Well, what if we modified this then, and said we had two council meetings back-to-back, which would be on October the 9th and then on the 16th?
Yeah, that would, that would take it out of the trip plan.
Or you could move the second one to the 23rd.
Yeah, we could do that, too. Could change both. What's your preference? Staff, staff have any?
Some of the bills paid, so, either one is, either one will work.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll get to that in the subsequent motion right now, which is still in with the motion to acknowledge receipt. Unless there's anything further, then I'll call for the vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. What's your preference on the October dates? We know for sure that that first one needs to be, or I'm recommending, per Mr. Har's suggestion, that it be changed from the 2nd to the 9th. We can either keep that second meeting in October for the 16th, or we can bump it to the 23rd.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would suggest moving it to the 23rd, since the first meeting in November falls much later because of elections.
Okay.
That would space it out more.
Yep, it's a good suggestion. So, Mr. Har is suggesting that we change both October meeting dates. The first would be on the 9th, the second would be on the 23rd. All the other proposed meeting dates for 2017 would be acceptable. Mr. Har, would you mind moving to approve the 2017 council meeting dates as amended?
There's a question.
Yep.
Is October 9th holiday, it's Columbus Day, is that a city holiday?
No, you don't have a...
We're not closed, but I don't know.
We have federal holidays.
We can't.
Policy is, policies do not have a public meeting, because a public meeting on those national dates. So, we could go with the 16th and 23rd.
Okay, how about changing them? I understand it's a policy. I don't really care if we meet on Columbus Day. But, what's your pleasure, folks?
I think it's fine.
To stay on the 9th?
The 9th. Yeah, where did we push it any other farther than you won't have us available to vote for bills and such? I mean, that's three weeks into the month.
All right, so, the document that I have in front of me then just amends the two October dates to the 9th and 23rd. Again, Mr. Har, would you be inclined to move the acceptance of these dates as amended?
Yes, to approve as amended.
Yep.
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Any discussion? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Last up is 16-212. This is MERS Healthcare Savings for Teamsters. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 16, 2016 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program for the Teamsters. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tahar. Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment on this, and then we'll open up for questions?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the MERS Healthcare Savings Program is currently utilized by all the other city employees except for those members that are in the Teamsters Bargain Unit. At such time, a few years ago, well, this was actually initially for non-union folks prior to my tenure here. And then, I'm going to guess, four or five years ago, the police bargaining units, police officers and surgeons both opted in to take part in this program. And the Teamsters recently approached us so that they could as well. This is a program that is 100% contribution of the employee. There is, simply the city serves as a vehicle to allow them to do this. It's a tax-free savings account to cover future costs of medical expenses that occurred after their employment. So, whether they would retire, or if they just leave employment, that's their account. But it's an ability to put tax-free dollars in there. Certainly, the employee, or former employee would be able to utilize these dollars as what a spouse, dependent, beneficiaries, et cetera. And again, as I mentioned, all contributions would come from the employees themselves. And you can see the difference, by IRS rules, you have to, you have to establish specific groupings of folks. And you can see there's several, whether it's the, through the clerk's office, or the DPW folks, or rec center, Teamsters, and they're proposing specific percentages of donations. And then those amounts cannot be changed. Again, this is an IRS rule. So, again, we would, staff, it's a great, it's a great tool to be utilized by, benefit by staff to utilize for future medical costs.
Very good. Questions for our city manager? Mr. Har?
So, up until this point, the Teamsters have had no option, no option to do this?
Correct. They, I mean, they had been, they had talked about it, but they didn't, the membership didn't have the votes to do it, but they would like to do it now.
Okay. And also, there's no additional cost to this? I just want to say for sure, there is no additional cost to the city. It's all on, all on the employees, their choice.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Girba?
And this agreement is identical to what we currently have for the police and everything? All choices on here, all boxes checked are identical? I just want to make sure.
Well, I don't say, no, it's not identical. They've chosen different amounts for contributions. And there's also some current language that is actually, for those that, we may have to come back to counsel for the other, the bargaining units, as well as the non-union staff, because there's some discrepancies between the language that MERS had given us a number of years ago, and what the, what the collective bargaining agreements say, again, from a while back. And another thing to complicate matters is that rules changed shortly after, so this was, for non-union, we made the changes that are currently in place for non-union folks shortly after I started, so almost nine years ago. And shortly after that, rules changed. And so, there's some things that we needed to bring to you all for some house cleaning, if you will, and make things where they need to be.
Okay, so, any of the current plans that we currently have is the same issue, that there's no contribution by the city? It's all...
Correct. It's 100% employee contribution.
Okay, and so, there is no cost, I would say there's no cost issue to the city, except from maybe slightly administrative...
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Additional questions? No? Okay. Any subsequent discussion? Actually, we just have a motion to acknowledge receipt, excuse me. We'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Dillon, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager Campbell dated November 16. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program for the Teamsters?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Discussion? No discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Ms. McClellan, and then Mr. Rhodes.
Yep, I just want to report on the Saline Youth Council and the Parks and Rec Commission teamed up last week, Tuesday, on November 15th, to do a teen forum. There was upwards, I think, of 44 kids here. There's also some of the Parks Commission members that did a survey of the parks and what is available to teens, and was very successful. And hopefully, that information will be taken and used at the Parks and Rec Department and get some good things going for teens.
Very good. It was a marvelous turnout. Thank you for your work on that. Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission met last week, and we continue to work on PSA's Public Service Announcements to go on Channel 18, and also articles in the FYI. It's a very active group, Environmental Commission, some very passionate folks in there. And of course, at our last council meeting, we gave out the Be Green Awards. And I think that was well-received. See, one of our recipients is here in the audience, nodding her head. And I also advise them that that would be my last meeting, because the next month meeting in December occurs on the 21st. And my current plan is to leave on the 20th, the day after our final council meeting, to go visit with my newest grandson.
It's a good reason to miss a meeting.
I thought so. Thank you.
Additional committee commissioner task force reports. Ms. Tahr?
Um, yes, well, just, I would just like to note that earlier this evening, there was the unveiling of the historical marker in downtown for the Salt Springs and the naming of the city of Celine. If you, it's at the parking lot, the, what I think of as the farmer's market parking lot. And that was a joint effort, a collaboration between the Celine Area Historical Society, Parks and Recreation, and the Arts and Culture Committee.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Additional committee commissioner task force reports. No, how about reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Just wanted to, just remind everyone that this coming Saturday is the official Small Business Saturday. It's the Saturday that's designated for individuals to shop at smaller businesses. And I know it's the day after Black Friday and all those other kind of sales, but the hope is that folks will save a few dollars to come spend at the local shops. We haven't lost any, any businesses during the construction of Michigan Avenue, and we want to, want to recognize the efforts put on by our, by our local businesses.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Absolutely. Ms. Dillon, did you have an announcement?
I do, I just have a couple of things. I want to piggyback on Mr. Rhodes and the Environmental Commission, and there is a box out in the lobby for unusable Christmas lights. It's getting to be that time where people are going to be putting them out. If you have lights, please do not put them in the trash or your recycle bin. Please bring them to City Hall. If you can't bring them here, there are other places. Home improvement places will generally accept them also, but do not put them in your trashcans. I have a question for Mr. Campbell or a comment. Can you please clarify if the communication with the city has been, is back up and running?
I believe, as of what time, chief?
About 7:25.
That the, the, the phones hopefully have been fixed, all communication. My understanding was the contractor east of town near Moon in Michigan Ave. had a major or significant fiber that caused all the surrounding areas to have issues all day. So hopefully, where everybody's up and running as of now.
Thank you. And then my last question for you, Mr. Campbell, is have we resolved our televising issue?
Uh, no, we have not. We have, it appears that we've narrowed it down to potential cause, and apparently, the, the speeds, the speed to get it from here over to Celine Area School so they can send it out. I'm not sure why, because, you know, it's been working successfully for quite some time, ever since the city initiated it. So that, that part still is, is unsolved, but we're working to determine a better method to increase the speed. So we, we're hopeful that potentially at the next meeting, or the meeting thereafter, that we're at least gonna attempt to what we think is, is a solution to see if it works. I mean, we have been, I mean, certainly unfortunately, it's not going out live, but it is within the, the next day or two after the regular meeting, it is being put up on and posted. So we are turning them around quickly, but again, obviously, it's not live, and that's, that's what we're, we're pushing.
Thank you.
Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Gearball?
I'd just like to remind everyone that Christmas at the farm will begin in December. I apologize for not having the times, but our, oh.
You want me to read them?
Go ahead.
Saturday the 10th of December from 11 to 3, Saturday the 17th of December from 11 to 3, and Sunday the 18th from 1 to 4.
Yeah, the Sunday one was to accommodate individuals wanting to be able to be on, to come on Sunday. So that's a change from that one Saturday.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Olson, would you mind coming up and maybe giving a little plug for our annual Christmas parade, which is really one of our iconic and most recognized and appreciated events in, in downtown Celine?
I'll give you more than you asked for.
All right.
On November 29th, at 7:00 PM, we'll have our tree lighting ceremony, and that will also be our ribbon cutting in celebration of the end of the Michigan Ave. project. So we'll have cookies and cocoa and carols, and we'll get the tree lit and get all that going again. Our 41st Annual Celine Christmas Parade will be December 3rd at 5:30, and you can meet with Santa afterwards. And this time, we're gonna do it in the, in the little hallway there in the merchant building. That way, kids can come in the back door and be nice and warm while they're waiting for Santa, and we'll have him in that little open area up front. Then Treasure Trail to Santa will be December 10th from 10 to 1:30, and that's in Bush's parking lot. That's always a favorite for everyone. They can do carriage rides and all kinds of things at that. And our Santa's mailbox will be out until December 15th. And today was the last day to get your colored drawings in to ride with Santa, but we've heard from an elf that if you happen to drop them into the mailbox, the elves will make sure that they get them to us.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no additional reports or announcements, we'll transition now to the last two items on the discussion portion of the agenda, which will kind of morph together because I think there's some interconnectivity here. Ms. McClellan, do you want to begin? I know you asked the city manager and I to add West Henry traffic calming to the discussion portion of the agenda. Would you welcome any thoughts and opinions you may have?
Yeah.
I have an issue related to Henry Street as well, specifically the intersection of South Ann Arbor.
Yeah. Now that Michigan Avenue is back to two-way traffic, and it was a little bit crazy today with the paving going on on West Henry Street, but when it was first back open, a lot of the residents, I live on this street, and also, I've heard from a lot of the neighbors in the neighborhood, that traffic was just, now that everybody knows that this is the cut-through, was flying down the road. And I just thought it is a perfect opportunity to kind of look at potential opportunities to do some traffic calming on West Henry. I know we've done it on Michigan Avenue, but if there's potential that we can do something, whether it's parking changes, or stop signs, or something to calm the traffic, especially on the, the western part of Henry Street. I know there's speed issues all, all on Henry Street, even on East Henry, but kind of the downhill slope to the stop sign there, I mean, there's been excess of speeds of 45, 55 miles an hour in a 25 zone there. So, just kind of opening up to see if there's any potential for doing any kind of calming measures there.
I think it's certainly worth exploring more. I guess the question I would pose to my colleagues on councils, does anybody have any objections if we empower staff to look at this issue more thoroughly and come back with any recommendations or thoughts? Do there be any objection to that?
No, I think it's appropriate.
No? No objection? No, okay. Excellent. Well, thank you, Ms. McClellan. The issue that, that I have to bring up, actually, I've heard from a number of residents, and I was bombarded by this observation and opinion at church one Sunday, is the intersection of Henry Street and South Ann Arbor, which we have discussed, I know as a group, many times over the course of the last several years. Many people, surprisingly enough, really appreciated and enjoyed the four-way stop there at Henry and South Ann Arbor. And it was actually somewhat surprising to receive that feedback. So, the comments that I received from numerous residents was whether, not that the light would remain, but that a four-way stop could be installed at that intersection, as opposed to just a stop sign for those who are east or westbound on, on Henry Street. I didn't convey to anyone that I supported that position, but since many people advocated that I bring it up, I thought I would articulate it at, at a council meeting to see what the, the thoughts and opinions were of staff and my council colleagues. Mr. Gearball?
And I mentioned this to City Manager Campbell, too, that I think that would be a good idea to assess, and I agree, there is an issue. We need to find out how the traffic flows now at this point, because if it starts to pile up on and cause traffic problems at, in that intersection, we just need to know. From my perspective, yeah, it made it a little more pedestrian friendly. I think it helped with some of the traffic issues and slowing down up there in that area. And it may become more of an issue as we put more residential on that, on Henry Street to the east, that that might make a good idea to do that.
Yeah, and I should note, too, that many of the comments and observations I got regarding the intersection of Henry and Ann Arbor Street were people who lived in that vicinity. South Ann Arbor, Henry, I received feedback from numerous people who live on Markana Court, people who are very familiar and often utilize that, that intersection. So, would there be any objections to also having staff explore and vet that in addition to traffic calming and traffic management on Henry?
No.
No?
No objection. Just one comment, I want to piggyback on that, is that I would like to see if there, if that were to be a four-way stop, I think having a flashing red there so that people are aware that that's a four-way stop. It's, it's sort of a, a hidden intersection, and you've got people that are used to it being a straight pass on Ann Arbor side. I think it would, it would take a little time to get adjusted.
I, I will say this, and for the most part, I agree with you, Ms. Dillon, but it never ceases to amaze me, especially when I'm southbound at that intersection, how many people who clearly are not from Celine will stop when they're southbound on Ann Arbor Street and Henry. And my reaction is probably less than matured. But it, it, it's shocking to me how frequently that happens, and how dangerous it is under the current circumstances and setup. So, okay. Well, then, you feel like you've got sufficient direction from us to explore those two issues? All right, excellent. Thank you. Mr. Rhodes, just anything further?
A related comment, not about these specific things, but I, I've noticed that there is not as much delineation of the crosswalks as what I had thought there would be with red, red concrete for those. Particularly when they're wet, things kind of all blend together. But perhaps they're not finished yet. Are they still gonna have the white cross, the white stop stripes, or whatever you call them?
Yeah, the, the, not stop mark, but the, the white lines, that's my understanding. I know that's scary as well. That's our understanding that they will, as part of the, the traffic markings.
Okay, yet to come.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further to be brought up under the discussion portion of the agenda? Yes, ma'am, please.
Talking about traffic lights, can Mr. Campbell address that the one at South Terrace has been removed today, and what about Old Creed?
I believe both of them have been removed.
They've all been removed, they were in the process.
Right, the only one that's left currently is Ann Arbor.
And those are back to the original configuration prior to construction.
Correct.
Anything else?
Just real quick, I, a couple of months ago, the mayor had shared with me some human rights and policies and ordinances that he had received from, I believe, Smith or Smith, that I'd like to share with council so that we, as we start to move forward on our attempting to try to adopt the new ordinance that will get going. One is from Macomb County, and I believe the other one is from the city of Mount Pleasant.
Yep.
But I also would like to look at what the current county of Washtenaw has, so that we may not have to reinvent the wheel if we adopt something that's similar, that's already in existence.
I would also encourage you, Mr. Gearball, or any other council colleagues, to take a look at two other communities that have had longstanding policies, policies that go back decades, the city of Ann Arbor and the city of East Lansing.
I believe Chelsea just recently did theirs.
And Chelsea has a very new one.
So we may want to look at that and see how those play out.
Very good. So you'll be distributing those electronically?
Yeah, I'll send those out. I had some copies, but I realized the one copy did not.
If you, if you give them to us, though, I could have someone from the clerk's office or Justine or, or her new replacement also send them out. If that's easier for you.
No, it'd be just as easy to forward it, I still have the email, so.
Okay, excellent. Anything further? Well, good meeting, my friends. We come now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? You've got more for us?
I got it.
I actually forgot one thing. As, and the tree lighting evening, we are also going to be ending our pave it forward program, and we'll be doing the $1,000 drawing that night, as well as the ribbon cutting and, and the tree lighting. But I just wanted everybody to know that it will end on the 29th, so get your, get your receipts in so we don't have people showing up on the 30th and it's all over. So I just want to remind people of that.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Additional citizen comments? Please.
Andrew Hatfield, 206 West Henry. Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan, for bringing up the traffic issue on Henry Street. It's something that I actually tried to bring up to City Manager Campbell about two years ago. Unfortunately, we didn't move forward on that at all, but it, it is something that a lot of us have been frustrated with for a long time. And exactly as Councilwoman McClellan brought up, after 10 months of everybody in a 50-mile radius being taught that that's a great cut-through when traffic is bad, it's, it's worse now than it ever was before. And another thing to take into consideration is that since the traffic calming has been put on on Michigan Avenue, that will push more people to a cut-through. I know that when I spoke to City Manager Campbell a couple of years ago, one of the things he mentioned to me is that it's actually not zoned residential street, it's owned an arterial road, which I'm assuming is something that happened when the connection to Bemis occurred, I'm not sure. Which I understand that MDOT has created that designation, it might be difficult for the city to change that. But the fact of the matter is, in practice, this is a residential street that we all have to live on. And when we discussed that, and I said, well, even if it's an arterial road, can't we still maintain the 25 mile an hour speed limit? And the response I got was yes, but if we do it too strictly, we'll push people onto Michigan Avenue, and we don't want to do that. And I think that's the, that's the point that I'd really like everybody to think about when we're moving forward on this, is, is that a valid debate? That we should be keeping people on Henry Street so that they don't use the major avenue to get through town? I don't think it's a valid debate, and, and I would like that to be part of the conversation when we move forward to talk about it. And my other request would be, as you do move forward to talk about it, if, I know sometimes when there are construction projects going on that will affect citizens, the city very kindly sends out notices to let citizens come, residents who live in that area, come and participate in the conversation. If you guys could make sure all the citizens and residents on Henry Street, Markana, areas that are directly related to this are informed whenever decisions are going to be made, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, my friend. And we'll do our best to, to communicate when the issue is brought back for, for consideration and discussion. Appreciate your comments, though. Additional citizen comments? Please.
My name's Ivan Pa, 204 West Henry Street. I just want to echo what Mr. Hatfield said. I'm concerned with the speed limits on our street, ever since the construction, everybody's using it their way. We do see a lot of times heavier trucks come down the road prior to construction, that's something that I'm concerned with. We have a bunch of young children on our street, and it's difficult to cross, and I want to make sure that's addressed. So if we can look forward to, to talk about the calming on the street, it would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, my friend. Additional citizen comments? Please.
My name's Jason Carrigan. I live at 212 West Henry Street, and my family has owned that property for well over 45 years, so I've seen this type of construction multiple times throughout my life. Each time it happens, the pass-through activity, cut-through activity gets worse. It has always been a residential neighborhood where there have been a great number of children, and it's a, it's a growing concern, especially recently. I can tell you specifically times at night when I will hear cars race up the street, trying to avoid, and even coming home, now that my wife and I have moved there, previous to that, when my parents were living there, we would sit and we would watch traffic back up, but we'd also watch traffic race down the hill to try and beat the light at Michigan Avenue and Celine and Ann Arbor Road, trying to race around that to Monroe. I appreciate Heidi bringing this up. It's an important issue to myself, since I've seen it for a long time, and I would really appreciate any effort to kind of calm that traffic.[1719.63]